For the folks in the crowd here, we've got agendas up here and then copies of the PowerPoint presentation with all the numbers and such. I know it's hard to look at from out there. So we're going to kick off the meeting here. I'll quickly turning it over after we kick off to the attorney Pete Agostino who will explain the format for tonight and how you can provide public comment if you're interested in doing that today. So he will cover that here in a second. To get things started, I'm going to ask Portage Township Board to call itself to order.
I call out the Portage Township Board to order on March 5th, 2024.
Okay, Portage Township Board is in order. I'd ask the same of Warren.
Oh, Warren Township's report to be in order.
Second.
Okay, we've got three members of Warren, two members of Portage, with the third is running late, but she will be here. So Pete, I think we can turn it over to you. I'm going to fire up the PowerPoint slide.
All right. I'm going to go or you want me to wait?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
So tonight, three things are going to happen. We are having a fourth public hearing. It's not required, but due to making sure we wanted to have the scheduling done right, no issues about scheduling of hearings. We're having a fourth public hearing on creation of the fire territory. So you'll get the chance to speak your position about that. We are also having, this is important, tonight is also a public hearing on the equipment replacement fund. That's a fund that will allow the territory to levy .033300 to basically, it's similar to the CUM funds, but Equipment Replacement Fund is a fund that allows collection of money to be able to put up buildings, buy equipment, house equipment for the firefighters. So there is an additional, you get to speak on two things tonight. Okay, the fire territory and the equipment replacement fund. Okay, on the equipment replacement fund, there is a procedure for remonstrance of that adopted tonight. There'll be a notice of adoption of that that'll be published. It requires 25 taxpayers to get together and sign documents and file at the county auditor's office. That all gets sent down to the DLGF for consideration. There is no remonstrance process for the territory. So so tonight, I've kind of gone over several times with some of these meetings. So on what the territory is, I just quickly touch on, and I'm going to explain more to the board what's going to happen tonight because tonight is the night they're going to actually vote. Seven o'clock, they're going to vote on whether there's going to be a territory and a cell of replacement. So the state law allows, two units of government, the next to each other contiguous, to create a territory to provide fire protection services to the resident in that territory. You have to specify when you do that, what the territory is. In this case, it's the unincorporated areas of Warren Township and Portage Township. You have to describe whether you're going to have a uniformed taxpayer or a different one. We have a uniformed taxpayer. You have to describe who's going to be the provider unit. That's the unit that is required for submitting the budget for approval. And I know there's been some questions and discussions. Well, is it providing a unit running everything? It's really more a matter of obligation to collect the tax dollars that come in and to spend them as their budget. Okay, you have to specify how you're going to be governed. We have an interlocal agreement that sets that out. There's going to be a board that governs this. The board is made up of the trustees from each township, another board member, and then alternating from year to year so that we have an odd number so that we don't have any pipe breaker issues. It's going to be Portage, then Warren, and it goes back and forth from year to year. Obviously, if someone doesn't like how the territory is going, there's a position for withdrawing from the territory. So this is not a stuck forever decision. But it does require people to work together going forward. Our mechanism is placed for doing that. So tonight, what's going to happen is both townships will have to vote on identical resolutions. So there's going to be a resolution that approves the formation of the territory and authorizes joining the territory. And also, it's going to approve an interlocal agreement that we've described that sets all these items out. And then there's going to be another resolution, which is to pass the equipment replacement fund. So those things are going to be considered starting at seven o'clock at the board meetings called for the purpose of voting. At this meeting, there's not going to be a vote in the six o'clock meeting. There's not going to be any votes, but just further hearing. Now, as we've done in the past, to understand the tax effect of what's happening, you have to understand what the budgeting needs are, what is being planned. I know Jason's gone over that before, and I think he'll probably run through it again tonight. So that's going to tell you, how do we come up with the amount of money that we're going to spend? Why is that important? Because Mr. Peters is here, his counterpart was here the last few times, did a nice job, he's going to let me live up to high standard here. He's going to explain what is the tax effect of the budget numbers that are coming forward on how we staff and provide the fire services in the territory. And those budget numbers then translate ultimately into, do you pay more tax or not? What's the effect on your property? What's the effect on the other units of government? They're in the same taxing group here. How does that impact them? So is the school corporation going to lose a little money? Is the city of South Bend going to lose a little money? Is the county going to lose a little money? Because of the circuit breaker that caps how much money you can tax for, and there's a limit on what you can grab on that. So that's going to be explained to you as well. And you'll be able to ask some questions when all the presentations are done, and then voice your opinion, not only on the territory, but also on the equipment replacement fund. So with that said, I'm going to turn it back over to Jason to do a little.
Thank you, Pete. So I'm going to go through our presentation here. During the presentation, I'll open it up for questions for the board. And then, as Pete said, it'll be opened up for public questions. The one thing I did fail to do as I was, you know, burning down trees with all these copies is if you do want to look at the interlocal agreement or the resolutions that'll be voted on, I've got only a couple extra copies here. Oh, thank you. Okay, but just come up and grab them. Feel free. Don't feel like you're interrupting. Want to come take a look at them?
Are you going to say what we got last time?
I emailed them to you.
Right.
It's what I emailed to you, essentially the same.
Okay.
There might be a typo correction there, but nothing.
Okay.
Pete will have the official ones.
Because I read this.
Okay. So let me go through here. And I'm Jason Quichill, a Portage Township trustee. Steve Downey sitting here is a Warren Township trustee. So he is, you know, a subject matter expert here. So some of your questions may lean on him for answers here. But just so going through the current status of this geographic area that we're talking about here. When we first look at the performance of these three fire stations that would be involved, Warren 18 and 19 has seen an increase in call volume of 26% in just the last three years. Station 41 has seen an increase of 15% in the last three years. So those are, those numbers do not include the mutual aid responses that each station does. And what is mutual aid? Well, mutual aid is a response that a fire station, they call will go out to a different fire station, yet this fire station responds. Maybe that crew is busy, they might have a technical issue, they could be wrapped up doing something else, and so, or they just need assistance. So another fire station responds. So mutual aid responses, we could provide those numbers. There are a lot of mutual aid responses that all three of these stations do, and these numbers do not include that. So if it did, it's very likely these numbers would be a lot higher. So strictly on calls into just this geographic area, the calls have gone up 26 and 15%. We're seeing a lot of local area economic development here. The new Carlisle Enterprise Center is a big one. It gets talked about a lot, you know, multi-million dollars of private investment that is occurring in this area. There's been a lot of additional housing developments in this area. We're expecting that those are going to increase with all of these, the economic boom that this area is seeing. And then when you really look at the population and the effect that it's had in just the last 10 years, not even including some of these latest economic developments in this area, the residential population has increased by 9% in the last 10 years. For comparison's sake, the entire St. Joe County population only increased by 2% over that population. So 9% would represent a much faster growing rate than the rest of the county. So you're sitting in a very fast growing area of St. Joe County. That has an effect on the need for fire protection. There's also some things that we talk about regarding the cultural expectations of fire departments. These days, the, I think it's a, I think it's a modern marvel, frankly, the modern fire department is. Even over the last 20, 30, 40 years, it has changed so much in what is expected and how a fire department performs. It's no longer some guys that, you know, it's not, the cultural expectation is that they're expecting fast responses from very well-trained professional firefighters. They don't always expect any more of the volunteer service where the folks are at home, or it's the middle of the night, they have to drive to the station, get the truck, come. And these are long response times. There's been a lot of changes. There's been a lot of changes in the tools that fire departments have at their disposal and the costs that are associated with that. So that's one thing that has to be acknowledged in that. And that affects your equipment and that you use, the facilities that you use. One thing that I touch on, the fire station that you're in right now was built to be a volunteer fire station. There were no bunk rooms in this fire station. There was no kitchen. There was no shower facilities because it wasn't built to house firefighters. That's had to be retrofitted over the years. There's other safety issues that current fire departments are built with that this station cannot accommodate right now. And so just one example of how quickly department standards have changed. Firefighter retention and qualification is an issue. It's a competitive environment now for firefighters. Getting, you know, getting highly qualified firefighters to come to your department and stay at your department are an issue all over. That's directly correlated to the pay benefits, the safety that you can provide to those firefighters. EMT qualifications, again, is something that we talk about in that when a firefighter shows up at your house, they are qualified to provide some sort of medical response to you. You know, that's a new, that's a newer cultural phenomenon when it comes to fire departments. That was not an expectation, you know, decades ago. And now these are minimum qualifications to be a firefighter. So some of our goals here is, of course, we want to be able to provide the best possible return for each taxpayer dollar. And in the end, we want to provide high-quality emergency response, and we want to provide fast response to the citizens and residents of this area. We want to have a high-quality on-scene service, support in an emergency, to be able to provide the appropriate and current standards when it comes to firefighter training and firefighter safety. So it really is about service and what we're able to provide to residents in these areas. And of course, we want to be efficient with tax dollars. We know that this is a growing area of demand, as the previous slides show. Your fire protection in your area does have an effect on insurance rates, mainly for commercial properties. There's something called an ISO rating. That is what's factored into that the type and quality of fire protection you have in an area will affect a commercial businesses, will affect what their rate is on their premium. And when you're talking about businesses that are looking to dump multi-million, millions of dollars into an area, that's something that they're looking at. It's part of their bottom line. What is their cost going to be? So be able, being able to provide high-quality fire service also has an economic development benefit to it. And then obviously, residents that are looking to build a house, buy a house, move somewhere. I know when I was first buying my house, my wife was pregnant. I was, I was cataloging where the closest hospital was. You know, this is just something that people are looking at. Any questions from the board on that? Okay, so the operational plan that we're proposing to you, the name that we're proposing would be the St. Joseph County Fire Territory. We believe that that represents what we think this is right now and where we'd like it to go into the future. We've made no secret that Steve and I think that this is the way of the future. We think that other entities would be interested in joining this in the future. We think that it provides benefit to all those that are involved. And we think that with a name like St. Joseph County Fire Territory, we'd be reflecting what we hope that future is. The two units that we'd be voting on tonight are for Warren Township and Portage Township. As I mentioned, that includes three fire stations that currently exist. One thing that's important to mention, I had this question this week, actually, from somebody who called the office. Each unit, each township would retain its own asset. This is a, this is the Portage Township Fire Station, Warren Township currently owns the other two fire stations. That would remain. Those assets would remain with those entities. They would not be then owned by the territory. They would still be owned by the townships themselves in perpetuity. And that's important. There would be a territory board that's put in place. The territory board is who is responsible for the oversight of the fire territory. They set the policies, they do the hiring, they adopt the budget, they do the tax levies, they manage the budget. They would be made up of equal representations of each township. So the administration of the township would be by this board that consists of equal parts of each participating unit. Here is the type of staffing that we would propose for this fire territory. Fire, five firefighters on staff at 18 and 19, four, including a battalion chief at Portage 41. The future goal would be to have five. The, as I just mentioned earlier, the limitations of this department do not allow for five firefighters to spend the night to sleep here, to stay here. So that would be a future goal, and there's some ways that that can be accommodated. You know, with some renovations, or there's pods, there's things that can be done to start to accommodate that in the future. But, you know, to start out, this is what we'd be looking at. So and then with leadership, fire chief and assistant chief, administrative support for an organization of this size would be an additional five people for a total of 47 staff members, 42 of them being frontline firefighter personnel. These are the salaries that we would propose. We believe that these would make this territory competitive with the other local rates. On my next slide, I will show you what many of those are. But a basic firefighter salary would begin at $75,000 per year. These proposed salaries up here would still not make us the highest-ranked fire department in terms of salary. In fact, we'd be ranked 44 out of 133 of all Indiana fire departments. And of fire departments with a similar population size that we'd be serving, we'd be ranked nine out of 55. So definitely top tier, but definitely not the highest. We think this is a reasonable place for us to land as we're putting together this territory. And then, as you can see on this slide, the current rates for the Southwest Fire Department are $53,000 per year. Warren provides $58,000. We're proposing 75. And as you can see, from some of the local fire departments, that would put us right about in line with those local ones. Some are higher, some are slightly lower, but you'll find that that average of about 75 to be pretty typical. Any questions from the board on that, or any of those? Talk a little bit about the provider role. We would propose that Portage Township be the provider unit. What that means is the provider unit, as Pete mentioned, some, one entity has to house the fund that the money is collected and administered from. Portage Township has professional office staff, has the administrative infrastructure in place, has internal controls, which is extraordinarily important when you're talking about dealing with money, expenses, checks. So we think it most appropriate that Portage Township be the provider unit. So payroll would be done by Portage Township, accounts payable, accounts receivable. There'd be billing, insurance issues there, billing, insurance, companies for service at times. So we would be providing all the human resources, all the legal staff. We would coordinate maintenance in many, in many ways on the assets for the territory, staff insurance, medical insurance, these type of things. And then the liability insurance would all run through Portage Township. And then just generally provide administrative support to 50 firefighter personnel when they have a problem with the check, when they need a preapproval form because they're trying to buy a house. They have someone that they know they can call that keeps regular business offers, regular business hours. You know, in Steve's case, if he's not there, you got to wait till he's back in town because he's gone. He doesn't have anybody backing him up. We have, we have layers of management in our staff. So we feel like this would provide the best support to the firefighters on staff to get them what they need and to treat them like employees and provide them the support that they deserve. Questions on that? All right, Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to have it be your show. He's going to talk about the financial implications of the budget that we proposed.
Thank you. Jeff Peters, with Peters Franklin. We service financial advisors for various governments across the state and have done a lot of work with fire territories, fire districts, et cetera. So one of the functions that you have to do, and part of this process, is to take what it is budget-wise that you want to provide, put it into a funding structure, and send that down to the state, the DLGF, for them to review and determine that your funding model is appropriate, what it looks like will fund your operations, will provide enough operating cash for you. And in addition to that, there are several requirements that we have to look at as to impacts. But for the proposed budgets, again, quantifying what the departments have put together for budget structure for 2025, looking at 5.45 million in expenditures for 26, 5.8 million, and for 27, 6.2 million approximately. These budgets, the sources of the income, being a local unit of government, the majority of your income is going to come from property tax. Every time we levy a dollar of property tax, it draws other piggyback taxes on top of it. Whenever we go to the license branch and register our vehicles, that money comes back to the units of government that provide you service. So part of that vehicle excise tax will come in a larger percentage. It's levy additional property tax. That also works for commercial vehicle excise taxes, which are like heavy vehicles. And then the bigger component is income tax that you pay into the county pool. Gets split based on the property taxes that you levy, but it comes a year later. So here in the top part, we can see that we've got property tax that comes in. And then in 26, you see the income tax, which is the local income tax of the lit, jumps up from like $160,000 to like $450,000. So again, we want to model these to make sure that you have enough money to come in. The amount of revenue coming in exceeds expenditures, but only by a little bit. One of the things that you'll want to do over time, if you decide to go this route, is to continue to build that balance up a little bit. Operating cash for those funds, when you get to a plateau point where you're going to operate going forward, should be about 30% in your operating budget. So that'll take you a few years to get to at that point in time. The equipment replacement fund is rate-driven. And as Pete said, the rate that is allowed per the statute is 3 and 1/3, so that's .0333 on each hundred dollars of assessed value. That again, when you levy those property taxes, will draw additional vehicle excise taxes. And in this example, you can see expenditure-wise for part of the capital outlays needed by the new fire territory, there's 200,000, budget isn't 25, 212 and 26 and 219 and 27. These are restricted only to capital needs. You can't use it for operating. Also, anything that you wouldn't spend on capital in one year, just to continue to accumulate into that fund. People use their equipment replacement funds for SCBA equipment, might be down payments on trucks. If you can, again, save it for multiple years, you might use it to buy a complete piece of apparatus. But that is one of the components that is particularly important for budgeting going forward and providing enough money so that you can provide the capital part of your budget. Levis to fund the operating in the ERF fund totals are about 5.4 million in 2025, about 5.6 million in '26, and just under 5.9 million in '27. Based on the assessed values that you have combined in the service area that you're going to look at, that would equate to a rate in 2025 of .9074 in 26, .9159, and then 27, .9245. And again, that's per $100 of assessed value. Based on the 24 net assessed value, Warren Township makes up about 76.8% of this area. And that would be approximately $4.1 million of the levy would be spread across Warren Township. And approximately 23.2% or about 1.25 million would be attributable to the Portage portion of that. Again, as Pete said, fire territory can have disproportionate rates, can have uniform rates. You've chosen to have uniform rates. So every, or both units of government will have a uniform tax rate applied against their assessed value beginning in 2025 if you go forward. So one of the other things we have to look at is the tax impact for taxpayers. And, you know, several years ago, the legislature went forth with 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps, where residential properties as homesteads only pay a maximum of 1%. Agricultural, nursing home property, and some other select entities, rental residential pays 2% as a maximum, and commercial properties pay 3%. So because of that, and because of the tax rates that you have in Warren and Portage Township at this point in time, there are certain residential properties that are already at that 1% cap. So if you raise those additional property taxes, those units or those residents and homeowners will not pay any additional money. However, there will be less money collected to the other units of government, which we'll get into as we go a little bit further. But for the tax impact for a Warren residential property taxpayer, if it's their primary residence with a value of $132,300 and over, they're not going to see any increase. But to give you an example of those under that amount, for $100,000 homestead, their annual increase would be approximately $183.63 for the year. For a $75,000 homestead, it would be an increase of $102.83 for the year. For a $50,000 homestead, the increase would be $68.55 for the year. 2% property is already at its cap, based on your tax rate, and would not see any increase. 3% property, and again, 3% property is commercial, industrial, anything that is business-related typically. A $100,000 commercial property would see an increase of approximately $464 for the year. A $250,000 property would see an increase of $1,160 for the year. $500,000 property would see an increase of $2,320 for the year. And a $1 million property would see an increase of $4,640 for the year. In Portage Township, if we look at the residential property, values of $130,300 and over are already at their tax cap and would not see an increase. A $50,000 homestead would see an increase of $4,185. $75,000 residents would see an increase of $62.78. $100,000 residents would see an increase of $108.82. Again, 2% property is already at its cap, would not see increases. For commercial property, a $100,000 commercial property would see an increase of $338 for the year. A $250,000 property, approximately $845 for the year. $500,000 property, $1,690 increase for the year. And for a $1 million property, approximately $3380 for the year. And for a $1 million property, approximately $3,380 for the year. Again, when you impose these additional taxes with your area, you will change the proportion and distribution of other tax revenues to the underlying units of government. The township, the county, the library, the school, any special taxing districts that apply to you. And one of these pools that is going to be altered is the income tax. Income tax, everybody pays in based on your payroll, goes to the state. The state measures this, and I say kind of measures it because income tax collections and distributions are always two years apart. Because by the time you send in your income tax distributions, it takes two years to get through the audit process. However, the state of Indiana is distributing part of your income tax back to the units of government. So, these are all estimates based on what the state has collected on behalf and from St. Joe County residents, and then what has been distributed. When you go into a fire territory like this and you raise your levy to fund these operations. Your levy is going to increase at a faster percentage than everybody else's levy. So it's going to change this allocation of income tax the year after you implement this. So if you implement it in 25, the income taxes in 26 are going to change because you are now levying more taxes. You are going to draw more income tax dollars into your pool. And all the other units of government are going to lose a little bit of theirs. The examples there for you. Warren Township looks to pick up from about $181,000 to about $480,000, 487. Portage from 333,000 to about $380,000. And then the next slide, if you would, shows how that ferrets out to the other units of government. St. Joe County would lose about 183,000. South Bend would lose about 187,000. And again, this is just the relative change. When we get to 2026, income tax receipts on whole may be higher than this. So they may not actually see that reduction, but this is the reduction that they would see based on your activities. The other thing that you need to consider is the amount of income tax that St. Joe County and South Bend receive currently. 180 some thousand dollars is not going to be significant for their collection of income taxes and their overall income stream. But one of the other requirements you have to look at is circuit breaker. When, again, you levy these additional taxes above and beyond what your neighbors are going to levy, and by neighbors, I mean neighboring units of government. So the townships, the county, the city, the library, et cetera. You are going to, as we talked about with these residential taxpayers. You're going to levy a higher tax on them, however, they are not going to pay anymore because they're already at their 1%. This deficit that is levied but not collected, gets shared proportionately based on tax rates for all the underlying units of government that provides you service. So, if you are allocating more of your property tax levy into fire protection. There will be less there for library, county, township, et cetera. And this is the analysis to show you that fallout. If we look at estimated in 24, and 24 is estimated based on the budgets as they've been approved. 23 was the actual allocation to those units of government of circuit breaker based on the fire area. When you go to 25, you can see like in St. Joe County, their amount jumps from 120,000 to 203,000. The fire territory picks up $295,000 of circuit breaker, which are property taxes that are not collected. South Bend's schools, you'll see it jumps from 246 to 416,000. Again, one of the things to look at and consider is the amount of circuit breaker loss that these units of government already experience. The county has a circuit breaker loss of about 2.5 million dollars. So tacking on 80 some thousand dollars is not going to be material again to their overall revenue stream. And for the schools, their overall circuit breaker loss is just shy of 13 million. So again, having an increase in circuit breaker loss of that amount proportionate to their revenue stream is not going to be material to them. But these are some of the requirements that you have to fulfill as you look at your impact. Last one is the estimated excise tax impact. Which again, we talked about, when you go to the license branch, you pay your license plate fees. It comes back to the units of government that actually provides you service in a proportionate share. You will be changing that proportionate share. And again, this just shows the pickup that will come towards fire protection. And the amount that would then flow away from counties, other townships, and other taxing entities. And does anybody have any questions on those, anything I can help with?
Any board questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. All right, last couple of slides here, I tacked on after the first couple of public hearings. These are some frequently asked questions that come up often. What happens if this does not pass tonight? If this does not pass tonight, Warren Township, just everything stays as is, kind of. Warren Township would continue to provide fire for Warren Township. Because we have dissolved our relationship with Southwest Central. We would have to contract with Warren or Southwest Central. That's the most likely scenario. Portage would have to. And we could provide our own fire service, but I would advocate for not doing that. We would have to contract with someone. What about firefighter benefits? We would match the current benefits, medical benefits that they have. These are the premium responsibilities. We've already run the numbers with one health insurance broker. We're going to run with another. But basically, we're confident that we'll be able to meet the same expectations that they're currently getting. The one difference is, the Warren Township firefighters are using the 77 pension fund. Southwest does not. Those firefighters that come into this territory would be in the 77 pension fund, which is considered a better fund. Was there a question there?
No.
Because that's what you do, you know, you go like that. What about ambulance service? That's a big one. Our original proposal, when it includes Center, Union, and Lakeville, who declined to join us, included two ambulance units. With Center declining to participate. Union and Lakeville don't have the option because they do not share a contiguous boundary with either of these two townships. And the limitations of this budget, the Warren and Portage budget, we cannot support the ambulance service right now. I ran some sort of napkin math numbers there that shows that you can roughly estimate about a million dollars per ambulance unit per year out of your budget. If we were to include just one, that would be equal to 12 firefighter positions we would have to lose. Or reduce the firefighter pay down to 55,000 to accommodate, sort of defeats the purpose. So, for the time being, that'll continue to be provided by the county slash the city of South Bend. However, for future expansion, the inclusion of ambulance service nearer to the people's homes out here in these townships is our number one priority. And what we will be talking about with folks if this were to pass tonight. Last one, what is the plan for Portage Township 41, which you're sitting in right now? Well, as we've mentioned, some sort of renovation or replacement will certainly be needed. Those are decisions that will have to take place in the future because the location could become part of the conversation. Is this the best location for it? What are we doing, Chris? That's right. So, but location would become part of the conversation if we were to grow and be a bigger territory. Does it make sense to have this fire station located elsewhere? You know, those are all question marks that are up in the air. However, the costs of any changes, improvements to this fire station. Any renovation would be borne by Portage Township itself, as I talked about on the first couple of slides. This remains an asset of Portage Township, so those costs would be for Portage Township alone, not the territory. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to our public hearing portion here. Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl question, yep, board questions.
It's not a question, it's a comment. You know, I had asked about how much of the, is it called mutual aid when one fire goes to another? And I must say, I was a lit, you sent me the information, thank you.
Go ahead, Cheryl, what it was. Steve, do you remember off the top of your head?
I did not.
I remember roughly. I think it was around 37 or 40 for Warren.
This year?
Yes, and it was 100 and I think 40.
So last year it was 29 received by Warren and 147 given.
For Center, Southwest, right?
Well, 60 went to Southwest, 75 went to North Central Fire and COP. It was a guess. Yeah, that's where most of it went, was New Carlyle and Southwest. The year before, it was 108 given, 32 received, 51 to 44. So definitely sending out.
I guess that was my concern and all was, you know, I don't know how to be polite. But it looked like Warren was subsidizing the Southwest Center and Portage at the time. And I'm just a little concerned that if we go together, I hope a good chunk of that would be at Portage. But still, that seemed an awful lot to me that y'all were only doing about 37. But you were helping the Southwest, which is part of Portage at the time, and up to 140 something. And that just concerns me that that doesn't continue like that. Sorry.
No, I appreciate where you're coming from. And when Cheryl brought it up to me, I said, I think that's the exact reason why these sort of consolidations are important. We're responding anyway to these areas and these gentlemen in the back of the room are not going to respond to the call when it comes in because it means somebody needs help. But I think it does speak to the reason why these sort of consolidations are important because you know, you're right, you're already providing mutual aid to a lot of these areas.
But you're not getting the money for it, right?
Generally.
Okay. Do you have any idea how many of that 140 went to Portage area?
About 90%.
Okay. So in that case, you would be getting reimbursed for what you were already doing.
Correct.
That makes sense to me.
Well, yeah, you have lower administrative costs when you're not doing things between them if it's just one unit, so. A benefit, plus time spent.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl.
And thanks for giving me those figures.
No problem. Any other board questions before we open up the public hearing?
I was just going to say, like, kind of looking over everything. It looks like the basic idea with this is by redoing the territories. We're able to, both, both units are able to adjust salaries to pay firefighters properly and actually make a competitive environment there. Warren Township's getting the administrative support and such that they don't have a lot of right now. They don't have a lot of flexibility there. So having our staff help out there is going to be helpful, making sure things don't get missed. It seems like we're just getting a lot of support already from Warren with firefighters and expertise and that kind of thing, so. Seems like a good trade off.
Thank you. Board comments or questions? Okay, we'll open it up for the public hearing. We can keep things kind of casual. And we will answer all the questions that you have, but if there's something that you don't want to ask because you don't want to in front of the crowd. Most of us hang around here plenty after the meeting is over, so feel free to ask us afterwards. The only thing we ask is that you state your name and your address. So, sir?
I'm Javard Lawrence. And is South Bend going to take over the townships and annex them? After the county has spent, or the townships have spent money?
South Bend can't. So the city of South Bend is a separate form of government than the townships. They don't have the ability to take them over.
Correct me right, but isn't it in the Indiana constitution that townships exist? So wouldn't it have to be the state would have to vote to eliminate townships, wouldn't they?
And there was, there was an effort probably.
The Kernan Report, right?
15, how many years ago? 15 point years ago? I will tell you that there was a lot of pushback from township governments across the state to stop that. And so, it hasn't not resurfaced. Now, I can't predict the future, but so far, it does not look like anyone's going to disband township government. There are plenty of provisions in the law that allow townships to merge together. There's been laws on the books for quite a few years that allow different units of government to, I call mini uni gov, like Marion County has, but it's seldom been used. So I don't see, I don't hear any talk of anyone wanting to do it. I mean, like you say, we see vergers and, you know, more what you're looking at. Forming the fire territories and so forth. But, yeah, annexation, takeover, like you say, it's been 15 plus years since that was really a put. And part of the push, not only to the townships, but cities and towns. Cities and towns do not want to provide service out into the rural area. There's no benefit for them. They don't have the utility infrastructure. And they don't want the cost structure of providing services to you or fire.
Sure, sir.
Yeah, Javard Lawrence, you know. What is, what is the cost of your study, please?
I do not know.
We haven't been.
12 to 18?
12?
12 to 18,000, that's what.
Typically.
You can quote us.
18,000?
Typically, it's 12 to 18,000 is what it costs for the municipal finance consulting on these. Yes, sir, in the back?
Where'd they get the funds to build the new station in Warren here?
I can let Steve talk to that.
We should bond. We did a bond.
How long bond?
I believe it's a 20 year bond. If I'm not mistaken.
Sir? Sir?
I forgot my question, but. Yeah, what state of development is the new fire station in Warren at now?
They just started going vertical. They're putting the steel up now. They hope to pour the living quarter slab possibly tomorrow if the weather's good. So, I don't know if that's one more percentage of what that is, but maybe 10 or 15%.
Go ahead, sir.
And the cost of what? Completed? And the building and the services combined?
The, the building, the bond is for, is, I'll say roughly about a $5 million building.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Did you take out a bond for each one?
Yes, there's several bonds. They, they fall under the same provision as a circuit breaker. Where just like this territory, the tax does not go up, the tax doesn't get the same effect held on those bonds. So that you shouldn't see a tax increase as a taxpayer for those for that debt.
Sir?
When they're building them new industries out there via.
New Carlyle?
Yeah. Why wasn't some of their tax payments and some of that stuff allocated for this fire project and Warren?
We weren't involved in the, the townships were not included in any of those negotiations, so I couldn't speak to it. The county economic folks handle that. We certainly tell them that we'd like some of their money.
You're going to be making most of the talk going out there.
Yeah. We, we do hope to engage New Carlyle and Olive Township next.
Well, I think New Carlyle is fire department law here right now. That's the ones that Warren should be.
Steve has had several conversations with them and invited them to join with this iteration. They asked us to move forward. They asked us to move forward with it and then to come back if it's approved, and they would be interested in possibly joining. So if the vote were to be approved tonight, our priority would be go to folks in New Carlisle and Olive Township and um, ask them to consider joining us for the following year. So we would go through a similar process again to include them. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Um, I'll say this goes through tonight, um, what's the term on it? I mean, the length?
Good question. So the interlocal agreement we would sign would um, begin the form, the territory would be formed on July first of this year, but would not go into service until January first. We would form the board, start getting things ready because obviously we can't hire everybody on January first, we'd have to prepare for that. Um, but at any time, either entity can sever the agreement. They just have to provide, I think, sixty day, sixty day notice?
I'd have to see whatever.
There's notice that's provided, it's usually, it's fairly short, I mean, two month, two months' notice. Warren Township could say, we don't want to do this anymore and we're leaving the territory.
And they have to make the decision at the same timeframe, which is between January one, April and March and before March, before April.
The state law um, dictates that it has to be between January and March.
So in, in effect, you're gonna have a territory really, it's gonna be going for a year and then basically keeps going from year to year unless one of the entities decides to pull out.
So Central Township is leaving at the end of the year?
We are separating from Central Township, uh, by the end of the year, the southwest central fire territory will no longer exist as it is. It will continue through the remainder of this year. Yes, sir, on hand?
Um, D L T F, that's, that's a state?
It's D L G F.
Agency?
Yes, Department of Local Government Finance, it's, it's an agency down in Indianapolis.
Okay.
And they're charged with overseeing budgets for all the local governments, state.
What's the reading on the D L?
Department of Local Government Finance, D L G F.
Thank you.
Who's gonna be on this board?
Uh, we have not had that conversation yet. The two trustees, uh, the two trustees are automatically members of the board. Then the trustees appoint one of their township board members, so a township board member from each township will be on there.
Well, actually, actually, it'll be the township trustees or someone who.
Or a designate.
Or designate the trustee, and then the board picks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Each board picks a member up to there. So, so all your representatives will be elected people, uh, okay? It's not gonna be someone that is, has, has no appointment that's not already elected.
And I should have added to the frequently asked questions, it's not a new elected office.
Yeah.
It's from a current elected official, that was a question last.
Is the at-large person elected though?
And the large, the at-large person will flip from board from year to year, so one year it'll be heavy in favor of Portage, the next year it'll be heavy in favor of Warren.
But it'll still come from the boards from each.
And that, that board, that third board will have to comply with open door laws, just like the other boards.
And I'm assuming it'll have to be televised, like we have to?
Well, so in, in uh, I think it's, I didn't bring the house bill.
July.
July twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five is when you have to record, make your, make your meetings available.
Okay, and that includes the fire board?
Yes, they'll have to do that. Anyone that's subject to open doors.
Just a moment, so that fifth person will also need to be a board member, so that means two board members plus trustee.
Yes, I think that's like. Let's take a look at.
Yeah, cause I, I didn't think I saw that in there. But that also means that's all on the board, right? Pointed.
But I thought you were some buy notes. This executive board does not get paid. And always pay the people.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm staying correct, so the additional voting member has to be a resident in the township. So it should be a board member or a resident in the township. That are nice.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Now these increased in salaries and that, that take effect immediately, or does it not?
It would take effect when the terr, when the fire protection begins, which would be July, January first of twenty twenty-five. Yes.
I would think it increases increments anyway, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think it was at the last meeting, you mentioned something about the I S O.
Yes.
Uh, this going to hit us a better rate?
I'm not super well-versed uh, on the factors, in fact, I've never, it feels like nobody is really sure. They come in and do an evaluation, but Steve, do you know what factors all go into that?
I believe by having a staff tankers will give us a benefited in the I S O, that's what hurt us now is water supply. It's the biggest thing with not having tankers.
If you were able to have hydrants, that has probably the biggest.
Yeah, hydrants is the biggest thing, so water supply, so next to that is actually having a, a staff tankers is, is guaranteed that that will move us from X number to X number, but that's probably the biggest component we can control.
Oh, is there a hydrant by the Grant Road Station?
Yeah, we put one in the ground there, we put a uh, six hundred gallon in it, well, it went as part of that station, both stations are gonna have that.
Yes, sir, on hand?
You know, you got a railroad track just south of uh, the Warren Township new building. And one question is, what are they gonna do with the old building?
It's gonna become a community center.
Pardon?
A community center, so people can run it out for the retirement parties or baby showers and things of that nature, and then the apparatus survey will be where we'll do our light maintenance on the trucks of the territory.
The other question is, uh, you got a railroad track just south of the fire station? And they have some awful long trains that go through there. If there's, the train has an accident or that's gonna be there, that train's gonna be there a long time before they release. Who, who planned that?
Uh, the railroad line or the station?
Township and.
Years ago, we decided that we needed to keep a station on the Mersey of the tracks. And since that station is now thirty-two years old, um, I don't know if there was some issues with it. And I, Steve, I mean, and but they're just operating, you know, by putting them in stations. And they moved the south station up closer to the central public township. The south station originally was in front of south.
Yeah.
Put your response.
Other questions then?
Yeah.
Otherwise we'll stick around, um, if folks have other things, and then actually, we're about a minute away, we can start our next meeting, so. Um, we do need to close this meeting down, so I'd uh, accept a motion from Portage and Warren. Start with Portage.
To adjourn.
I agree, Portage.
Uh, Warren?
Make motion to close.
I agree.
When he agrees, okay, um, public hearing is closed, this meeting is ended. Seven P M. I'm, I'm less well-versed on this one, uh, counselor, to be honest with you. What's that?
You have domain, except be a witness.
Okay, we don't have to call a meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, call a meeting, okay. Ryan's over there taking minutes, so we wanna get. Um, okay, um, let's do it again, run it back. We can have Portage Township call their meeting to order.
We're in Portage Township, meeting to order, I'm not saying the date this time, I hope that just.
Get the date right, Ryan. Um, three members present, Portage Township.
Meeting in order.
Okay, three members present from Warren Township.
Okay, may I? All right, so I'll, I'll start with Portage Township. First, oh, the duty of Portage Township to consider is adopting uh, a resolution to authorize entry based on the territory and becoming a participating, participating in the territory and approving an annual operating service, so.
Does the resolution have a number?
I would ask you to give me a number.
It does, um, I sent it to you, Ryan, do you have it handy? If not, I'll, I'll. Clearly do more than one.
Uh, is it the, is it the eleven twenty twenty-four, is that the one?
Resolution two twenty.
Nope.
Nope, no, that's Warren, okay?
Is the resolution one twenty twenty?
Nope.
Nope.
It'll be Warren. If it's ten, then it's ten. It is, ten dash two one, ten dash twenty twenty-four.
That's four, that's our replacement.
Ten best.
No, that's it.
Establishing.
Just tell me which one I need to say.
Yeah, it's ten dash twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is it?
And so then the equipment replacement fund is ten dash eleven.
Eleven, yep.
I move that Portage take uh, ten dash twenty twenty-four. Yeah, I have, will we approve it?
There's a second, do we, do we discuss this as?
Warren Township is just Warren Township, or Portage Township is just Portage.
I mean, I, like I said, I think this lets us do what needs to be done to adjust the territories, improve pay, improve the administrative and border, and create a system where we can actually be growing going forward.
I agree.
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Cheryl, yes.
Mohammed, yes. So then I'm gonna ask you guys to sign this resolution. I'll choose, I collect all the signatures and I'll distribute them tomorrow.
Sure.
I have to notarize the uh, interlocal signatures, and I left my stamp in the car, but I'll.
Okay.
But I was shocked when I saw how much you all went out to the southwest territory. I called you and I said, is this right?
We're very old.
Huh? Yeah, you're very helpful. Yeah.
No, no, you just did ten twenty-four.
Yeah.
So now.
Yes.
All being together.
Yeah. We'll be paying for what you've been giving us for free.
And this is the uh, interlocal.
Seriously, I have to, I've always wondered why I have to adjourn.
Just state loss of.
Trustee does?
Yeah.
Specifically?
Yeah.
No kidding.
Oh, I get to you, okay. All right.
Well, I.
First, reading your sign too. Okay. So you've passed now the formation of the territory and the operating fund.
And then we're gonna do eleven twenty twenty-four, which is the equipment replacement. So let's.
So what's that number?
That's eleven.
Eleven dash twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, eleven, got you.
Okay, so now uh, you're ready to take action on the resolution number eleven twenty twenty-four, which is establishing.
I move that we do eleven twenty twenty-four, accept it?
Second. All in favor?
Cheryl, aye.
Asked.
It was bad.
No, I don't have anything else.
This is it for us, isn't it?
Do, can they end their meeting then, or do they stick around? I mean.
Why don't they wait till Warren's all done?
To find out what happens?
Yeah, that's going.
We should.
It's the power you all have.
All right, while they're signing, um, I think Portage could, uh, or Warren could um, offer the same, I don't want to get ahead of Pete down there.
Yeah, take it easy, I'm not smashing you.
Sorry.
I, I'll keep track of the data.
I'm hungry.
There, you gotta get out of here.
Okay. I give it to you, right?
All right, now we can come over here to Warren's.
So we shouldn't adjourn, right?
No, we don't know what's gonna happen.
So first order of business is what is your resolution number?
One. Just one? So first one of the year.
Okay.
Two.
Yeah. Yeah, so the first order of your business then is adoption of resolution one dash twenty twenty-four, which is the resolution authorizing you to create the territory and.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yay for me.
Yay.
Great, okay, so one twenty twenty-four is approved, so I'm gonna have you guys sign this. No, that's the end of the. Signing your broker slots. My best personal business to be.
They have none of the personal thing?
I'm sure many years.
We failed grade school, bird guy in the bike parade.
Interlokal agreements. Yeah, sign on. And then you'll get a copy too, cause I have to report. And then the next order of business is approval of resolution two dash twenty twenty-four, which is the resolution that authorizes the uh, equipment replacement. Yeah, that's point oh three three.
Need to make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion. And uh, no, only question, Wendy?
Aye, aye, sir.
I'll circulate these for signature. You guys can adjourn now. I'll make a motion to Portage Township.
A second. I would give a aye.
Portage Township is adjourned. Stick around, bro.
Aye.
Oh, you wanna run out?
We can move each other's. Yeah. Very much. I think we're done here. Warren, adjourn if you, unless you have other business.
So there we have it. Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconds, one fifth.
Offer up.
Handshake between townships?
Well, like I said, at least we're gonna be paying now for when y'all was coming to help us.
Absolutely.
When I saw that, I was shocked.
Yeah.
No, I, you know, I had asked it. I was like. I was like, what? A hundred and forty-something and y'all only did thirty-seven? You can help us as much.